This may as a city of Yerica Springs, City Council, come to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Dean Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Ken Pennell.
Present.
Lady Balance.
I am here.
James Cervito.
Here.
Mr. Raffiello.
Here.
Ms. Berry.
Uh-huh. Anybody stand for the pledge? "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I approve.
Second?
Second.
Doc? Yes?
I'd like to, uh, I don't know if that should be unfinished business or new business, like to, uh, a lot of things I found out, I'd like to reconsider Dotson's carriage franchise.
Second.
Okay, restate that again?
I'd like to reconsider Dotson's carriage franchise. Can that be under unfinished business?
It'll have to be under unfinished business.
Yeah.
Okay, motion made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post?
No.
Be number eight. Any others? Mr. Pennell?
Move to delete number one under unfinished.
Second?
Second.
Made in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, dropped. Any others? I have, uh, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Balance?
Move to delete number one under new business, since it's the end of the year and it's almost time for a year end.
Second?
Second.
Made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dropped. Do we hear Nate? Bush, did you say no?
I did not.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Um, under new business, number eight, I would like to add a discussion of free parking for December.
Second.
Made in seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm ready under December. Under new business. Any others? Okay. Motion to approve the agenda's amended?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is approval amendments. Motion discussed?
So moved.
Second.
A discussion? Ms. Balance?
Under... The new business? Under new business, number 10, I would like to have that amended where it says, "She moved to change the enabling ordinances for HDC and the Planning Commission, so the applications go to the city clerk to disseminate all the information to council and the mayor, and any council member or the mayor may nominate."
Okay, any further? Mr. Pennell?
Just a point of information. Are we covering vacancies on commissions in the agenda, or are they spelled out all the time in the minutes?
You mean it's what is open, they're not supposed to be spelled out on the agenda? And most of the time they aren't, yeah? They haven't, and so forth, as far as I know.
There's several that need to be, I don't know if it'd be, since it wasn't discussed, it wouldn't be in the minutes, I guess, at this point, but it needs to be added to the agenda.
You can discuss it under, um, number three, if you so desire. Procedure for appointing commission vacancy. Any others?
Move to approve as amended.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post? We have Commission Committee authority reports, vacancies. First up, it'd be Beverly with the blanket, the Planning Commission, check this out. Yes, we can.
Hi, I just wanted to let you know, um, a few things that the Planning Commission is working on. Um, we are working on a booklet of developmental standards, and it's gonna be a simplified version of what our code says, in case somebody wants to buy something in R1, or build something in R2, or thinking about buying a property in C2, the steps that they need, or the things that can happen in those, and we're working on that. It might take us a few months to get that done, but we are working on it, 'cause we do feel like it's very important. Um, I don't know that it will come to this table, but I do wanna, uh, let you know that we had a CUP application at 60 Hillside, um, where there's a B&amp;B now, that has a five-unit B&amp;B, and they asked for a CUP for a six-unit B&amp;B, and they were denied at the Planning Commission, because our definitions say a B&amp;B is up to five units, and a hotel is six units or more. So, because of the definitions, that did get, um, denied at our table, and I don't know if it's gonna come to you or not, but just so that you're aware of what happened. And, um, number three on your old business, it's been on there for a very long time, so I just want to remind you what that is. Two ordinances for signs got passed in the, in the past, and have not ever been codified into our code book today. And so, the Planning Commission went through it step by step and worked those two ordinances into the book, and Mr. Leswick and Mr. Ponell are gonna be bringing that to your table to get approved. And so, when that happens, then we can go forward with some changes to our sign ordinances that we're finding, you know, along the way. We found one was the digital electronic signs, one was the, um, what it says on number three, uh, off-premise signs, it says that they can be replaced, and it should be repaired instead of replaced, but the more we get into it, the further we find out we have other problems. This, according to our police department and our building inspector, is a legal sign now, because they took down the sign. Now it looks way worse than it ever did, and I was trying to get rid of non-conforming old signs that had been abandoned, and what happened was, the structure stayed, there's like several of them now, and they look so much worse than what they did before, that I felt like, you know, crying or pulling my hair out, because our laws are not written well enough to get the structures taken down. So, that's gonna be coming, you know, to your table eventually, too, because this is obviously a problem. Um, I also wanted to tell you that, you know, um, the Planning Commission works for you guys. We take care of the, the things that you don't really have time to take care of, and our 2012 agenda really is gonna be up to you. What you see as priority and what you've, um, you will set our goals and priorities by what you fund in the 2012 budget. If you see our zoning map as a priority, that will be a priority to us when you fund it. If you see a master plan as a priority, then that will be a priority to us if you fund it. If not, we'll just keep plodding along, one little fix at a time, and, um, we just wanna make sure that you know that we work for you, and whatever you set as priority, that's what we're gonna work on.
I think I could get my, you just skipped a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we ask questions?
Yeah.
This one, now, on the, on the booklet you're working on, are you gonna be working with HDC at all on that also, or just strictly zoning?
Right now, we're just zoning. HDC has a book, um, so I don't know if both of them could be given or not.
Thank you. Next is hospital report, I think Mr. Mary is here to discuss the issues under unfinished business number four, so, uh, parks, they said in a report, HCC cemetery didn't get a report, yellow bag committee, uh, have, hey, so, let's get the chair. We'll get you in under unfinished business when we open up the other. Uh, I have been talking to Phil Jackson, we have been discussing the actual necessity of reforming this committee, um, and I think I discussed this. I sent out an email to everybody, trying to get detailed questions, I got responses from three, and didn't get any from three others, so, we do have a, uh, board meeting on the ninth, and I was hoping to have those questions, by then we could address them at that point. Any questions? Okay. Our Deer Hunt Committee will meet Friday, tomorrow, at two o'clock for our first meeting. Y'all wanna attend, that's fine. Mr. Berry's gonna be there, myself, Dee Perky-Pow, um, Gwen Bennett, Mickey Snyder, and Earl Hunt, I said Earl, didn't I? Okay. Alright, so we'll, we'll have our first meeting tomorrow. The other departments should have reports in your packets. Okay? Not, we'll start with public comment, Mr. Pennell?
Can we quickly go over the commission vacancy? Before we start the public comments?
Okay, you'll do that now, instead of?
I thought that's where you said?
Well, under new business number three, I thought that's where you were gonna add a minute. Since you're gonna be talking about procedure for appointing commission vacancies anyway. Hey, if y'all wanna do it, it's up to you.
I'll wait.
Okay.
I'm gonna be here.
Okay. Alright, public comments, first on the list is Judy Lockhart, I hope I said that right? Reference carries? This Lockhart? It is getting hot in here. Hi.
Hi.
There you go.
Thank you. I'm Judy Lockhart, and I own Angels Among Us Wedding Chapel and the Main Street Inn, and I did have Angel Wings Carriage. In 2004, I applied for a carriage franchise. The only thing that I could be granted was Mill Hollow Road. I was not allowed to go anywhere else, could not cross Main Street to take people to the other side of town, even to cross Main, not even to drive on it. We, um, I talked to the chief of police, I talked to Weaver, I talked to everyone I could, and they all told me, no, no, there was no way, that the franchises were set, that the routes were set, and that was it. There was no, no giving, no taking, no nothing. In the last ten years, Ray Dotson has probably called me an average of three to four times a year, wanting to know what I'm doing, if I want to sell my franchise, if I would let him park at the Angels Among Us Wedding Chapel, if I would let him turn around there, and every time he calls, he tells me he has a different place that he has set up to run his carriage service out of, and that he always intends to go forward with it, and I always tell him, no. And so I hope you will consider that, consider what it has done to me, it put me out of the carriage business. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jill Gunnels?
Come to the cave. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Real quick, well, it's not gonna be quick unless you guys, uh, wanna put this off until the tour franchise comes up on the agenda. I handed every member, I think, has a copy of my letter, which is what I'm going to use as my comments, um, so I ask mayor and council if you'd like me to state that now, and just read that statement to you all, or if you want to wait till it comes up on the agenda and address it at that time.
As I say, I recommend you wait.
Wait?
If you're gonna stay, yeah.
If you're gonna stay, okay. If you're gonna stay, then, uh, it will be?
New business number seven.
Number seven, yep. It's gonna be a bit. Grab your chair. Thank you, sir. Uh, Jerry Varner?
Hello, Joe. Hi there, well, I'm Jerry Varner with Making Memories Tours, and, uh, just kinda wanted to introduce myself real quickly, some of y'all I haven't had the opportunity to meet, so I was kinda wanting to, to get a face in front of the name, so to speak, so I'll just mention briefly. I'm here under the, uh, with the tour franchise, and I've got old brochures, I've been working, uh, promoting tours and building trips for different groups for, this is the, working on the second year, I guess, and, um, there's a lot of opportunity. Um, I traveled the, the U.S., I also have a motor coach company that we also travel, so I kinda wear two different hats, so I kinda have a bit of an advantage, because I'm on lots of parts of the country, I'm the guy buying, purchasing the step-on guides and building trips, and then, in this side of the world, I'm, uh, I'm the one interested in doing the, the tours, so I kinda have a unique perspective that I think that could, that Yerica Springs could benefit from. So I will not speak anymore, I'll be back there in the back once we get to the, the ordinance section, if there's any questions at any time, I would be happy to answer them to the best of my ability, so thank you for this time.
Thank you, sir. Tom? I thought I seen your hat down there.
I'll kinda, I'll kinda do what Joe did, I'll be, I'll be, I'll be short, because I am short. Uh, I'll wait for the stuff to come around on the agenda, but, uh, just to let y'all know, a little heads up, I've got about seventy-five different signatures here on an impromptu petition, uh, basically stating that they do not want non-approved animal-drawn vehicles on Main Street. We on the petition feel it was irrational and irresponsible of the city council to approve a grossly inaccurate and incomplete carriage franchise application, which will allow up to eleven animal-drawn vehicles pulled by multiple animals operating at the same time, twenty-four hours a day, in heavy traffic. We feel this is a great safety hazard and a great injustice to the current carriage franchise holder. We ask that the city revoke the franchise permit for Ray Dotson doing business as Ozark Mountain Carriages. Uh, I've got signed affidavits from every business owner that has a parking lot between the train station and the Pied Piper that says that Ray Dotson is not allowed on their property, if he is, he's trespassing, and those will be given to the police department and the sheriff's department after the meeting. Y'all would like to have a look at those, I have those on hand for later as well. Y'all are aware of the motion to rescind, I'll let y'all act on that as you guys feel appropriate, whenever it's appropriate on the list. And I'll be here if anybody has any questions.
Okay, give that to Don, please. That's all the public comments, next on the agenda is unfinished business. We dropped number one, number two is dog control update, Mr. Pennell?
Want some to discuss?
Second? Discussion's open.
There hasn't been a whole lot of change since the last meeting, and, uh, I know there's some, uh, people that think that I personally am dragging my feet on getting this done. Uh, I've, I've been working with, uh, the clerk upstairs, and also, I think it's cold, the city attorney. To, to just give you a, a quick rundown, and I think I gave these figures before, from the time, first of January, to October, there were thirty-four tickets issued. The first one, which was a serious one that really got everyone's attention, uh, finally, on the ten-twenty-one-eleven court date, I checked with the clerk yesterday, they're going to bench trial February seventeenth, two thousand and twelve, so, we, we were waiting partially to, uh, to see how the judicial, judicial system was addressing this, not realizing it was going to take ten months, uh, from the time it happened until the time it's actually going to trial, so, I've already answered the emails that I've gotten regarding, uh, what is the status, I've already talked to, uh, Mrs. Scoop in regards to her, her Lulu, and, uh, we're, we're moving right along, and, uh, you know, we don't, we don't wanna overreact, but at the same time, we wanna make sure that, you know, if there are things that maybe need to be looked at differently after the court case, that, uh, we can address it accordingly, and I'm open to any, any other comments and questions. I haven't been, uh, pushing the city attorney hard to, to get the, uh, the changes looked at, because there's been a lot of other higher priority issues, but at the same time, we were waiting for the, to see what happened with the, uh, the, the one that kinda started this whole thing rolling, so, that's where we're at.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions? Any further discussion on? Alright, number three, unfinished business, the one Beverly just talked about, you, you gonna leave it postponed?
Yes.
Okay. Number four, hospital audit report and lease, motion to discuss?
Second.
Okay, made in seconded, discussion's open. Y'all should have a copy of the audit report, I think you got it last time. And Mr. Mary is here to answer any questions, if you can't answer them, he'll refer to Mr. Wendell, who will have to, uh, make an appearance, or I guess you can go out there and ask him independently.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Michael Mary, I'm vice chair for the hospital commission. I'm here to answer what questions I can regarding the audit. If the questions, as Mayor Pate states, are very in-depth, I will ask you to hold your questions until, uh, Wendell and associates can address those issues. He was unable to come tonight as a result of a family surgery, uh, but agreed to come at his earliest opportunity, which I would assume would be the next meeting. So, I'm open for any questions that you might have.
Mr. Mary?
I just, one thing that I had, uh, seemed like a large number, is under operating expenses, legal fees of a hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven fourteen, it's on page, uh, pages aren't numbered. It'd be the third page of numbers after the two cover pages. Got revenue, grants paid, operating expenses.
Yes, I see. These fees were incurred, um, through the hospital commission's attorneys, Seth Ward out of Fayetteville, um, in, um, two thousand and, uh, let's see, I think it's two thousand and eight, uh, the hospital commission, uh, filed suit against Allegiance Healthcare, which is our current hospital organization running our facility, um, and these fees were incurred, uh, up to the point that we reached a, an agreement in federal court on, uh, I think, October of two thousand and eight.
Any further?
I, I appreciate the fact that the numbers look large, they are large, if, uh, there was a considerable amount of dollars that were in question, uh, the commission had to consider the fact that continuing to pursue those dollars would have cost an additional two hundred thousand dollars in expenses, so, we had to reach a compromise and a number that we could agree upon. Essentially, the home health organization, the leases from the hospital commission pays a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars annually to the commission for utilizing their lease services. Uh, the first payment from the LLC after Allegiance took control of the hospital was kept by Allegiance, um, and not placed in the commission accounts. Uh, it was at that point that the commission felt it necessary to pursue legal action in order to protect future payments. Uh, the final conclusion, uh, which was an arbitrated agreement rather than having taken it to court, was that the hospital would keep the hundred and sixty-three thousand that they first acquired from the LLC in two thousand and eight, but all subsequent, uh, lease payments will be paid to the commission. So it was a, definitely a, a financial benefit to extend those, uh, figures, but, in the long term, uh, we have, I believe, another seven years of that lease, uh, being paid back to the commission at that rate, so, it was a very large sum of money, and subsequently justified the expense. One thing I'd like you to note, if, uh, anyone might have a question about it, on the second page, the previous page to the one we were just looking at, under current liabilities, um, let me make note that this audit was based on December thirty-first, two thousand and ten. The forty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty cents that is listed as a liability is fees accumulated by Allegiance Healthcare, partially representing their own audit figures, uh, created for the year two thousand and ten. Uh, it is the opinion of Seth Ward, our attorneys, that the agreement made, uh, with the federal courts excluded the commission's responsibility to that figure. A letter's been sent to Allegiance Healthcare to that, uh, context, and as of now, we've received no information back from Allegiance, but our attorneys strongly support the fact that the agreement we made excludes us from being responsible for that number.
Any further? Mr. Pennell?
Uh, when I first brought this up, I'd ask for, uh, any backup information through the city attorney, and determine that the only thing that was available, uh, was a copy of the original lease that, uh, assignment that was done with, uh, uh, between the city and Yerica Springs Community Healthcare, which was a not-for-profit, and with the way that the municipal code is set up, that the commission was established pursuant now, I believe, that, uh, we don't have anybody to answer questions, I would like to postpone any more discussion on this, and if we have to have a special meeting where we've got somebody that can give us some answers, because I have some real concerns, because I don't know if we even have a legal agreement of being able to lease out this hospital. I'll make a motion to postpone this either to the next meeting, or have a special meeting, whichever is possible.
Okay, we can postpone to the next meeting, have, uh, several of the members of the commission here that can answer more, Mr. Wendell. Contractual issues is on your top?
I thought we were told the last time, too, that we were going to ask somebody here that can answer the questions, so.
We made every effort to arrange, Mr. Wendell.
If we can have it set up based on their avail, availability, so we won't be?
So you're talking about the report, I mean, the lease?
Talking about the whole, the whole, the audit and the agenda item.
Yeah. We can do that.
We're in discussion phase right now?
Yes, we still are?
Well, I mean, if there's any other answers that, uh, the gentleman can render, I mean, that, you know, before we dismiss him, I mean, he's, he's here now, and he can answer some of our questions, I don't see why we shouldn't address him right now, I mean, if there's other?
I'd be glad to answer whatever questions I could in that issue, as a matter of fact, I can't imagine the, uh, accounting firm being able to address these questions, as it's not their, um, their issues.
So, what, this council want to postpone, or have Mr. Mary answer some, some more questions? Mr. Berry?
I guess I'm curious what, what the questions are, you know, I haven't heard any questions yet, that, to the, the gentleman here, so, I'm not sure why we need to postpone it either. My question then to the city attorney, as far as the legality of the commission even contracting out the hospital operation.
If I understand the audience's questions regarding the lease, those probably really need to be objected toward or directed toward the hospital commission's legal counsel, that has never been the city attorney in the last twenty-some years or more, they've always had their own legal counsel, I think that's probably the gentleman that, uh, Mr. Mary has referred to at this time.
Yes, sir.
Prior to that, I believe it was Louis Effley.
And I do believe it would be a possibility that this attorney could come and address...